Hello, everybody. Um, welcome to our Longmont Housing Authority meeting, uh, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Can we have a roll call, please? We'll start with, um.
Commissioner Yarborough.
Commissioner McCoy.
Tim Hall, Assistant City Councilor.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Commissioner Pockham.
Commissioner Christ.
Chair Peck.
Uh, Commissioner Yalguerra.
Lawrence Lee, LHA assistant director.
Harold Logitz.
Karen Hummert, executive assistant.
Molly Donahue, housing director.
Quincy Williams, Regional Property Manager, LHA.
Becky. Oh, Kendra, sorry, I.
Kendra.
I was waiting for everybody else here. Um, Kendra Daniels. Kendra, is it Kendra, I'm sorry. Okay, that's, I guess. Um, I understand we have no agenda revisions or submissions of documents. Then we need, I need a, uh, motion to approve the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Yarborough. Is there any discussion on these notes or changes? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. We are public invited to be heard. May be, uh, one public. One person to be heard.
One person.
Lance. You have the floor.
Alright. Just like to remind you all, today is National Social Media Giving Day. It's also National Gummy Worm Day, National Tropic, uh, Topiak Pudding Day.
Capioca.
Capioca.
There you go, Capioca Giving Day, which I hate. And then National I Love Horses Day, which I love. Um, it is also National Pet Fire Safety Day, which is really important with the wildfires that are going on today. And National Give Something Day. So I would like to give you all a quarter. Cause I know you guys can't accept gifts large. So I would like to give you all a quarter. I'm giving it back to you. There you go.
Well, donate.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. And the four of you are gonna have to share a dollar. I didn't bring enough quarters. Here you go, Matthew. And for the four of you, share a dollar.
Your attorney probably doesn't want to take that one.
Well, then the four of you share a dollar. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lance.
That's very sweet. We donate this to Longmore Public Media. Maybe in-house nonprofit.
We can all give, yeah. Okay, we're at all the new business. We have a resolution, LHA twenty twenty-five oh nine. And I, is this going to Molly?
Yes.
Okay, Molly.
Okay, so the first item here, we did talk about private activity bonds a couple of months ago. Um, also in preparation for when you all, as your role at city council, approved the private activity bond award, uh, for Apple Commons. So, as a city, in, we did that in June. So here, we view this item on the LHA side to accept that allocation from the city and then, uh, commit to issuing those bonds to the Apple Commons project once it comes forward. Um, yeah, well, just, since we've heard about this one already, I'll just wait and see if there's any questions.
Do we have any questions on this? From anyone? No, then I, um, guess I would like to have a motion to adopt or pass the LHA twenty twenty-five oh nine.
I'll move resolution, um, twenty twenty-five oh nine. It's okay.
To move by Commissioner Yarborough. Um, no discussion, let's vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. And now we are on to private, oh, this, uh, resolution, LHA twenty twenty-five dash ten. So.
I'll talk.
Do you, okay?
Um, so we use, uh, management system for HUD to track and manage all of our reports and data with HUD. Um, it's called PIC. Soon to be changed at some point. It's supposed to be changed to something else. Um, it is where we submit reports like the CMAP that you guys review and approve every year. Um, historically, Tracy DiFrancesco, our compliance manager and voucher admin person, has, uh, overseen that role and done that. And, you know, it's been something that we've wanted to update for a long time because she's the one who prepares and submits the CMAP. You don't want to be the one doing all the work and doing all submitting to create those. Separation of duties. And so, you know, we understand that Harold's time is hard. He's, you know, doing a lot, so we reached out to HUD to ask who can, uh, sit in this executive director role. And they said, you can delegate this role to someone else. So decided to delegate that role to me so that I would be the one overseeing and submitting. And Tracy would still continue to put together information that's related to the voucher program. And there might be other reports that we do, um, regarding your plan and other things. So this is just giving us the document that supports me in that role that HUD needs to have in order to officially designate me as the executive director in that system.
Great.
How do you feel about that? It's just another login.
Is that all of this? I mean, that's what it seems like it is. It's really just, we have to authorize that access.
We have to have a resolution.
To authorize that access.
Yes. If it was him, it would just be done. But because it's not gonna be him in this role, I need a list designating the authority.
And an individual sits in the other side role on the documents or something.
Still move?
Second.
Moved by, um, Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Christ, that we, um, adopt a resolution, LHA twenty twenty-five ten. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now at, uh, reviewing and accepting a twenty twenty-four audit.
Turn the head. Um, so I'm just gonna kind of give a synopsis. Do you guys have any questions? So, um, basically on the balance sheet, we did receive and recognize, um, over one million developer fees, which is great.
Yeah.
Um, uh, we're kind of getting on that down low where all the developer fees are coming in. Um, so that's great. Um, we had a decrease in capital assets, but that's basically from the hover land transfer to Ascent. Um, so we originally purchased it from LHDC and then held it, um, until the closing for Ascent. So that land has been transferred. Um, so that was the decrease there. Our non-current assets went up twelve million and that is basically due to the Ascent closing and the Spring Creek transfer. So what happens is many loans are built into these projects and they come on our balance sheet. And they'll end up getting paid as they work through the waterfall. Um, a lot of them stay on our balance sheet for a really long time because those loans don't get to the waterfall for like twenty years. Cause you're busy paying off other stuff. Um, so that's why Spring Creek is an entity that was owned by LHDC and they transferred ownership to us, um, in the anticipation possibly that LHDC will eventually be dissolved. Um, at the moment, it's not, but we did want to go ahead with that transfer. Um, so that did bring on some, both some assets, along with a loan. Um, but it's a discreetly component unit, which is basically, it's a, it's legally separate. It has its own tax ID, it files taxes and everything like that, but LHA has an ownership. So we have to report those in our financials, but they're reported separately because they're not combined in LHA's financials. So they have their own financials. We just report exactly what happened on theirs. So those aren't rolled into ours.
How long will it be before LH, uh, LHDC no longer exists?
Well, Fall River, so we have Fall River, the Hearthstone, and the Lodge. Those are the three entities that are still with LHDC. I know we looked at LHDC as a different platform.
Right.
Um, to, to be a nonprofit and bring in services. So we've started to do that. I mean, they may continue to be on, but then there's always that option if they decide not to. We can get, if we start transferring these properties out as we come to re-syndication or anything like that, there is that opportunity.
Is there any benefit to us?
Yes. So for Fall River, we did this analysis and it is, um, more financially beneficial to keep LHDC in that, uh, primary ownership role instead of LHA. But also Fall River just opened in twenty twenty and so the, through the fifteen-year compliance period, we're at least fifteen years out from getting LHDC out. Um, and so because of that property, it was most advantageous to leave them on. And also because they were willing to take on this nonprofit arm role, um, that is the plan. Right now, it is those two main functions.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, so, uh, for loans for debt, we did increase, um, our loan, but that was because of Spring Creek. So we took on DOH's loan, uh, for Spring Creek. But technically, Spring Creek pays us monthly for us to pay DOH quarterly. So it's no real money out of our pocket. Um, it's basically them paying us so we can pay, um, DOH. Um, then for revenues, um, you'll see a decrease in revenues, but the, the biggest piece of that is we had to do, um, there was a one-time. I forget what it was. It was five million dollars. It was recognizing, I have to look, but recognizing something so it looked like we had an increase in revenues, but we actually had increases in, in every platform, from developer fees to management fees, um, even to HUD grants. Um, so we, we did receive extra there. It's just that one-time transaction caused it to look like we didn't receive, like it was lower than most.
Is that seller back?
Yes, the seller carryback, no, thank you.
Five point nine million.
Yeah, I highlighted that.
Thank you.
Asked for more.
Um, so, um, the expenses, we did have increases in expenses. We had almost over a million in.
Packed it.
Expenses. And a lot of that was due to the increase in fair market rents.
Sorry, what's happening?
Um, housing assistance payments. So our section eight subsidies.
Just in the, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, we did have like one million dollar increase there, um, mainly due to the fair market increase. We had additional positions that we added in the budget, um, the assistant director. We also did some different allocations because we felt like we needed a maintenance supervisor that would be at LHA level and have more at the property, you know, maintenance techs at the properties and then have a supervisor that could be kind of that go-to if they need additional assistance and, and oversee unit turns and, and, and things like that. So those are the main things. Um, do you guys have any questions?
No, you explained the one. Yeah, you did, you explained it very well.
Okay.
On any of the financials?
Yeah, go for it.
So, so I have a question. On page twenty-five of our packet, which I actually don't know, uh, it looks like page seven of the financial audit stuff. It says the authority finished the year with a net position of thirty-six point eight million.
Mm-hmm.
Am I misunderstanding something with a net position or a comma somewhere here? Like, is this, does that mean LHA is thirty-six point eight million positive here?
So.
How is this being accounted? I, I don't think that's the case.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, so where it gets kind of a little shady, um, not, and not shady, but. Discreetly, confusing, there we are.
Yeah.
Is, uh, we have a lot of loans. So if you look at our notes receivable, it looks like we have all these assets that are gonna come in. Um, they will eventually, when you do re-syndication and they'll go through that process. So it does increase our net position based on all of those assets. Um, so, so basically that's kind of just rolling forward and rolling forward. And then as you add Spring Creek and you add Ascent, it increases and increases.
So you're saying the debt is showing up as an asset here?
No, the net position.
Debt owed to LHA.
Gotcha.
Yeah, debt, so, yeah, assets. So, yeah, debt actually owed to LHA increases the net position because you're recognizing all of that money and not having expenditures that get applied towards it. So then your net position and adjust keeps carrying forward. You won't, usually you'll see things increase mainly because we're getting more loans that come in. Um, but we'll probably be on a download for a little bit because we're, we're done with pro, we're, we're not done with projects, but.
We're in a lull.
We're in a lull.
We're in a, we're changing.
We're in that breathing spot.
I have to change that.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we do have a pretty good, you'll get more, um, information when we go through the budget and you'll see where our actual general fund is. Cause that's, we actually take those assets out of the equation so you can actually see where the fund balance is and how it'll be spent. And that'll come.
So that is more of a, that net position is more of a function of how this is accounted for in this moment of time in this document, not a full reflection of the financial position that.
Correct. Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a paper issue when you look at assets and liabilities and then they all netted out.
Thirty-six point eight million dollar paper issue.
Thirty-six point eight million. Well, we, we pay attention to operationally is actually what Kendra just talked about, which is really what is our fund balance? Uh, because that's really your available cash that you have to play and we've restricted that a little bit too.
Yeah.
Um, and so she has a different model that's really showing what the fund balance is, what's liquid in the fund balance. Uh, because we did restrict, um, some of the reserves for certain things. And operationally, that's what we've got.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
For the money that comes in.
I think the word you were looking for is obscure.
I'm sure we all have a different word for it.
I mean, it's not unlike what, what, what you all will see. I mean, part of it is, these, uh, are audits. It's kind of like when we get our act for, um, and you see that the position in the city, I think, was over a billion dollars. Well, in, in reality, that's not liquid cash that's in play in this. And so they're, they're taking all your assets and saying, well, this is what you're doubting that.
Yeah, it just kind of feels weird when it says financial highlight, the authority finished the year with net position of thirty-six point eight million dollars.
Yeah.
And.
Cool.
So, so what we look at is the next line that says cash and investments totaled six point one million at the end of the year.
Yeah. It's cause you're recognizing all those revenues to come in. But, yeah, there's a little lag on when they come in.
Clarify that and for a lesson in adjectives.
A lot of you wrote forward to verb in the next project.
No, I think, I was gonna say, I think we need a motion to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah.
So are there any questions? Well, I guess you already asked that.
Yeah.
Said we didn't have a lot.
Uh, I move, uh, we accept the twenty, twenty-four audit as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It is the Commissioner McCoy moved that we accept the twenty twenty-four audit, seconded by Commissioner Christ. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passed, we did adopt it. Good work. So, uh, oh, this is the one that I was very, am very nervous about. The discussion on federal budget impacts and voucher funding, shortfalls.
Alright, so I'm gonna start with some brand-new information coming out yesterday from the federal budget side. Um, the House Committee on Transportation, Housing and Urban Development, um, the Appropriations Subcommittee, uh, we let, met to mark up their spending bill yesterday. Uh, we follow the National Community Development Association and they send out news alerts for us about, uh, progress if those things are moving through. So it still needs to go to the Senate as well. Um, but it, the NCDAs expect kind of a rubber stamping of what we are seeing being proposed through the Subcommittee. So we'll see how that changes, if at all, but I'll just kind of review what is proposed so far in the House. Uh, CDPG program fully funded at the twenty twenty-five level. Um, we would still expect to see a smaller allocation because entitlement communities, as you reach a certain population, they have to divvy up the same amount of money amongst more people. So we'll expect a small decrease, but not drastic. Um, that's really important on the city side because we do fund a staff member out of CDPG and obviously the programs that we run. Um, home funding is proposed to be zero for twenty twenty-six. Uh, the reason cited is that there's still unspent home art money out there, which there certainly is. We, uh, had two projects with a total two point four million dollar home art award. One of them, we have spent the majority, that's for the in-between Wesley Homes project, and the other one hasn't yet started. So, um, even here in Boulder County, our ho, home art funds are just getting rolling on, rolling on being spent. Um, but for twenty twenty-six, there wouldn't be home funds. So twenty twenty-six is an officially Longmont's rotation year in the home consortium. But if we're skipping a year, depending on what happens in future years, I would expect that the homes consortium starts talking about how to adjust the rotation to accommodate that. So we could be feeling some home, um, funding impacts in the coming years, but not immediately. Um, so that's really mostly on the city side, even though, uh, LHA does benefit from those funds frequently. Um.
How much do we have? Is it two point four million?
Uh, we have two point four million dollars of project awards in the city for home art grants.
That's not how much we get. So then, um, each city, Broomfield, Boulder, Longmont, Boulder County.
And, yes, this is for the, for regular home, not home art, yeah.
Okay.
So when it's our turn, every four years, it's our turn on our regular home funds. And typically that award comes in at about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, in the homeless realm, they funded homeless assistance grants, um, uh, with a slight increase. Emergency solution grants with a slight increase. And fully funds the housing for persons with AIDS program. Um, this still, there's still, um, some financial impacts out there around emergency housing vouchers. Those are some expiring programs. There's still some impacts going on there. And continuing of care funding sources are still, um, have been talked about getting cut. So they don't address that in this news update, but that has been, we knew that was coming a while ago. But it does look like they did keep some homeless assistance money running. Voucher programs, um, funded at twenty twenty-five levels with, uh, a, a slight increase to ensure full renewal of existing housing contracts. Um, I bet that increase is not enough to add voucher capacity. It's, it's if rents go up or we'll have to see what rents do because they don't release those until about spring twenty twenty-six. But, uh, I would expect that we would just say that they're holding steady. So that is huge. That's for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, tenant-based rental assistance, and the project-based rental assistance, uh, program.
Did they talk about the shortfall funding in this update?
Not in this update, but we're gonna get to that as well in a moment, or at least what we've heard the most recent. Um, fully funds contract renewals for the section two oh two program with a slight increase and the section eight eleven program for people with disabilities. We don't have that program here in Longmont, but hopefully someday. Um, and then it goes into a couple of other things that aren't necessarily as applicable to us. But that is the best possible news we could have heard and it's not final, but it is, um, much more optimistic than we were expecting. Um, so I'll pause there for the federal funding side before we jump into the voucher shortfall stuff. Is there any questions?
Was this all out of the big beautiful bill?
So the bill itself was like, was the resolution, but it didn't give any numbers. So we were waiting for this to come out, for the Subcommittee's to meet, so we could see what the actual number proposals were. So this is the first time we're seeing actual numbers talked about.
They say new opinion miss about the direct allocation of voucher funds to the states?
No, didn't mention anything about it.
That's probably the most concerning piece.
Mm-hmm.
Because if they do.
Which part I couldn't clear.
So one of the things that was in the bill is, I think it was in the bill.
Yeah.
Was to, instead of running the money through HUD, they would take the voucher money and treat it as block grant to the states.
Um, so they talked about block grants to the states. They didn't get very specific though on which programs, if I recall, but everybody knew what they were talking about, so.
So what tends to happen in that scenario is when, and we've seen it in DR, our funding, that when they push the money into the states, the states will take administrative funding to cover what they need to do. So then understanding what's really gonna be available for vouchers. I mean, that's just a big unknown for us right now.
I think, I'm sorry. No, I was thinking, uh, I think in one of those sessions at CML, they were talking about that. And then they were, the state was saying, like, they don't want, they don't wanna do it, you know, because.
Huge lift.
It is a huge lift. Yeah, so, I mean, that's a hu, a huge concern. Um, you know how long it would take for us to even get the funding?
Yes.
Because they would have, if, how long will it take for them to even organize a whole new team and to administrate the funding? So, yeah, I agree.
And my concern is, uh, the equity of that, is that, you know, um, depending upon the, the administrative team that does it, do they even understand? It takes a long time to learn it. So it makes me very nervous.
And to the mayor's point, that the equity issue, your favorite topic, uh, rail, and thinking about how the equity of that has transpired over, over decades. How is this thing gonna be distributed out? We know where the, uh, if they were, where they typically start and where, and, and we are not on that first rung of that, so that's, that's a concern.
The major thing I'm worried about is would they just take all the federal rules and plop them into a state program?
Exactly, yes.
Because those federal rules are very complex and God bless HUD staff, but at least they've been managing it. Um, and can provide guidance, which is what I'm afraid of, but.
Yes, and they can change, those rules can change as we've seen on a dime, so. Well, thank you for keeping up with that, but now we need the voucher updates.
Right. So Kendra's gonna jump in, we'll do this how we did this, this last go-around. Um, so we've had, I keep saying four, but it's three HUD reps, right?
I think we're on our fourth.
Fourth. Four HUD reps.
But it's in Denver, I think.
Right. So, um, but we reported on this in, out of March and we had a great HUD rep. We got so much great information and then that was four people ago. We have not even met, not either person number two or three or even four yet. We don't know who, we've never even been able to talk to them.
Oh, man.
But at least the fourth we're hearing is not in St. Louis, it's here. Um, we've been asking for a meeting. They at least sent us some, uh, documents for us to fill out so that they could maybe prepare for a meeting, but we haven't gotten a date. Um, but what they did say in that last communication is applications for voucher shortfall funding are available. So there must be some level of voucher shortfall funding available, we just don't know how much. Um, and so we prepared that and we put that through already, right? Am I speaking correctly? Are we waiting for a signature?
I, I submitted the application.
I signed it.
So I did, cause I didn't get it like a, usually I get a, a final.
Don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
Did you get a final one, like that is with your signature?
We can double check that.
No, I, I signed.
It will be submitted if not.
I can reach out to the HUD rep and see if they sign.
Okay.
No, I signed it.
Um, so that's in. And our shortfall funding amount has not worsened. It's actually gotten a little bit better, correct?
Well, they did say we're on the right track.
Yeah.
Um, we started the year at four hundred and twenty-one vouchers and we're down to four hundred. So we are dropping down to lessen our shortfall. I think we were at, at the beginning of the year, we were looking at almost four hundred, five hundred in shortfall. Um, we're now at two hundred and twelve. Um, with no shortfall being recognized in the second year. Um, and that is with adding eighteen vouchers at the very end of December. We don't think that's gonna happen for Ascent. Um, so it might be a little tricky. We gotta keep still getting those numbers down, um, because we are adding eighteen PVEs, um, into the Ascent project. So not only are we trying to get down to shortfall, but also accommodate those PVEs that are, that are gonna be, um, put into place.
So conditions improving. Um, I, what we had talked about doing two months ago was tonight, going through the, like, the menu of levers that we could pull to, to improve that situation. We're not ready to propose that all the way tonight. We gotta talk to the HUD rep, see, um, what, there's some naturally occurring levers happening that have already improved it slightly. So let's see if there's anything else that could fall in line like that. Um, we may still come back and talk about the levers that we need to pull to improve it. Um, but if there's shortfall funding available and we're down to two hundred thousand, I'm hopeful that that can be the solution without having to make major changes to the program. Is it Lauren or Kendra, is there anything else on that?
Um, we did also submit, we did submit the waiver, which is.
Oh, right.
Um, a waiver to allow us a thirty-day notice to, um, applicants or tenants, um, to not give. So technically the rules say you have to give them, um, a year to two years notice if the fair market drops. And our fair market dropped from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. The problem is that we have to keep those people at those levels unless we give them notice, um, that we're gonna reduce it back down, which then kind of puts a strain on them if they are over that. So we're not there yet, but we did submit the waiver to HUD to give us the approval to do that thirty days. We do need to. So we're not there yet, but we did submit the waiver to HUD to give us the approval to do that thirty days. We do need to pull that trigger. Um, I think what I heard from Tracy is it got bounced back because the person that was originally on the, um, correspondence to submit is no longer there. So, but we did, um, send it to our current rep. So we will follow up and see who the next person needs to go to, or it's our current HUD rep that has to approve that waiver.
So that's one we'll keep in our back pocket. So we've taken the steps to pull that lever if we need to, um, but.
It's a waiting game, very hard.
Uh, Harold, anything else that you want to talk to here? Any other questions for board members?
Does anyone else have a question about these voucher shortfalls? Just puts everybody in a really strained position, doesn't it? Just waiting and not knowing what to do when you start this.
I always just, you know, all this hullabaloo about cutting everything, and then, woo, funded with an increase, funded with an increase.
Who's on, uh, can we, uh, maybe see a, is it too hard to find the list of what representatives, uh, senators are on that, uh?
On the committee?
Committee, in that way, you know, if there are anybody that, uh, people could reach out and communicate to, that it would be.
I'm sure we can figure that out.
And maybe give us a few talking points. Or email points.
I'll see if I can find it while we continue through the.
Would that help or hurt?
Yeah, that's a good question.
If, if, uh, elected officials emailed.
What do you think, Harold?
It depends on what you say.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking more of party line, if we have, but what our goals are, like we.
I don't know. Emails can be interpreted very differently.
Maybe we, yeah, try to communicate. Uh, get maybe kind of a, uh, have a conversation with Harold about.
Yeah, I think it, part of the problem is it's moving so fast that, you know, you hear things something one day, and then you'll go, oh, this isn't gonna be good. And then literally, they get something and it's not what you hear. And so it's kind of hard to, it's just moving so fast that you don't wanna also communicate something, and it turns out like this just turned out, you know, like nothing worked. Yeah, 'cause part of what, I think what, part of what we're starting to see is that many of these housing programs are not red or blue. They're equ- equally impactful to all states, all cities. And I think what we're seeing is some thought into that. Um, so it'll be interesting, I mean, we're hearing some really interesting stories right now on, on the Medicaid side, where you're seeing at the county level of government, red counties and blue counties that historically wouldn't work with each other, are actually working with each other because they're on an impact perspective, saying the same thing. So there's some really interesting dynamics that we're starting to see. But let us put some thought on that, to that, and then we'll reach out to you.
I also don't see any Colorado representatives on this committee.
What states are in the front?
Arkansas, Florida, Texas, California, Virginia, Montana, Arizona, Ohio, Illinois, New Jersey, New York.
So we don't have anybody speaking up for us?
Certainly, the closest the mountain region at all is in Arizona, uh, mountain, uh, Montana and Arizona.
Shiki, there's something for you doing this.
What's that?
Career.
Not going to Montana.
I know, I know you'd speak up for us.
So Molly, if this, if these, um, block grants were pushed to the state, do you think that the state would have some control? Maybe it might be able to tailor it more to our, uh?
I feel like that's the point, right?
Mm-hmm.
Where they want the states to be able to run it in their way that serves their people, isn't that kind of the administration's whole uh, message? But I really, I, who knows? Especially when you're trying to push established programs down, with rules that have been in place for so long. I don't know, I really don't.
We have a HUD representative here now, so maybe that's the beginning of improvement.
Yeah. That's a really hard question, because in some ways, that's what, um, DR funding, how they approach the disaster recovery funding, which our experience was not as, I mean, it was better, but it wasn't great, and in some cases, uh, we were almost put in between our federal reps and the state in terms of how they were interpreting it and what they were seeing. And so, in some cases, it became more difficult, and, um, so it's hard to say, and that was a different administration on that, at the state level. So it's also dependent on who's sitting in the, in the state world and what they're doing. We think Councilmember Rodriguez and Mary Ear Peck were, you may not have been here, but when we initially got the DR funding, we were in a pretty significant tussle with the state of trying to get them to just get it directed to us, for recovery funding. Because that's when you start seeing the layering of rules. And then that becomes a problem. So, and I think none of us, I think the challenge was, to Molly's point, nobody was used to that within the system.
Trying to interpret it, something that's been interpreted by HUD, the state is trying to interpret HUD's interpretation, and then the local interpret the state and HUD. It just makes the layered cake taller.
And there were times where we disagreed with the state's interpretation and went with HUD's interpretation, which actually served us well, because we didn't have any money clawback. Where there was, there were some jurisdictions that went the other direction, and money was clawbacked.
And now HUD's trying to clawback clawback stuff no matter what.
Yeah.
Interesting. Any other questions? So, um, let's move on into, uh, Executive Directory Report on Development Updates.
Uh, I'll start this one off. Um, so Ascent Construction is running very smoothly. Um, we are down to the point where we have contingency money that was not needed because construction's gone so smoothly. So we're trying to do some add-on features where we can to, uh, spend some money, because in this case, spending money is good, because it results in greater tax credits, et cetera. Um, we are working with Wild Plum, um, to do joint marketing efforts and information sessions on getting the ECE spots filled, but also, um, getting the word out for people to apply for the housing. We are kicking off our, uh, major marketing and communications effort next Monday for, for all ends of it. Just, A, celebrating the project, because this was the big deal that we went, we went for it when we started this, and like, it was the stretch our legs project, and really, um, dig deep, and so we wanna celebrate that. Also, get the interest out there, and make sure we've got our, um, interest list nice and healthy. And then we're going to prepare to open up the waitlists for, um, the, uh, typical li-tech units and the project-based voucher units that are there in early September, is the goal. So that we have people all lined up that can be working on leases to be ready for January or so movements.
Do you have interest? Has interest been generated?
Yeah, so we have already gotten, uh, inquiries, and so we're getting, making sure to get up the, uh, email address set up, just ascent@longmontcolorado.gov, trying to get a sign up on the construction fence, along with the other, uh, project sponsors that has access to the interest list as well. Um, yep, that's all kicking off next week.
Do you have a sense, and these are very different types of products ultimately, but looking at the True North project, and then this Ascent project, do you have a sense of the numbers of interest that we're seeing?
We do know the number of interest at True North.
Right.
Um, and I think we've talked about that a bit, but we, we had, we are oversubscribed, for sure. Um, on this one, we don't have numbers yet, but what we are hearing, um, the advisory, one of the advisory board members, for LHA Advisory Board, um, is a local landlord here with some, she says it's what falls into the naturally affordable realm, is her, uh, portfolio. And she says that the people with three and four-bedroom rentals, she is actually, well, she's starting to have a slowdown in people looking for one-bedroom rentals, and the interest is off, off, sorry, is, um, through the roof. She's on three and four bedrooms.
Wow.
So we already, we knew through our housing needs assessment process that we had larger families that needed larger units, and that was in very short supply here. But what we also started talking about is maybe we, our market is hitting the point where we're moving into a model where it's roommates. Um, so that might be happening as well, but we certainly know that the three and four bedrooms, um, the interest is super high. And we also know from our Aspen Meadows neighborhood and our four-bedroom, three and four-bedroom waitlist there, those people have been on there forever, and they've been waiting, um, and they do not come off. They don't find a place, and they are still interested.
Yeah, and, and I go with the younger population, so, um, talking to friends of my kids who are like mid twenties and later, it's more and more common where you're finding even married couples looking for a roommate and moving into a two-bedroom, um, just trying to minimize the, the cost of what they're having to pay. I'm surprised about how many of their friends are actually doing that. Um, I think what we're ready to dig into on the True North project is, um, there are people that aren't qualified. Um, what about fifty percent or so?
We're planning on fifty percent, they're still working through the numbers.
And, and so once we get that data set, it's gonna be really informative. Because, um, similar to what you all talked about in your council role or your urban renewal role, you know, it's getting more clear through True North that when you look at houses that are at that price point, and there's some that we're starting to see come on the market in, in similar ways, people still aren't qualifying for them. So when you look at the need for rental units, that's really what's generating, is you take all of these things into account, even when it's affordable, people still aren't qualifying, and it's typically their debt-to-income ratio. And it's things like medical expenses, student loans, and those types of things that are impacting them. And so hopefully, what we can get out of that data set is to get a really good look at, now combining it with the need, housing needs assessment that Molly's working, get some really tangible data to start seeing what we need and why, um, and that really relates to the employment sector. Uh, because those are the same folks that, on the economic development side, they're saying they need support.
What do you, Molly, what do you mean when you say you're planning for about fifty percent to not qualify?
Um, we, so we had, when we, uh, had the interest list, we had something like eight or nine hundred people on the interest list. We opened the portal, we got two hundred and fifty to three hundred actual applications. You do a first round cut, like you are over income, um, and then a second round, deeper look. You start actually gathering income documents and, um, seeing if their debt-to-income ratio will make them a viable mortgage holder. And so that's the process they're going through right now, is they're doing the deep dive on the people's applications that made the initial eligibility cut, um, to make sure that they can qualify for a mortgage.
So then to sum up this discussion from the True North project and from the Ascent, now we're seeing two different data sets of different types of
Yes.
app, housing applicants effectively.
Yeah.
That will know both who gets in and who is still left looking for options.
Right.
Right.
And those that aren't necessarily, um, ready for homeownership because they can't get a mortgage due to debt-to-income ratio, et cetera, et cetera. That's who we then target in this realm. Um, I will say also on the city side, we submitted an application, um, for another DOLA grant, planning grant, to update our housing needs assessment, because we did that in twenty twenty-three. It was using primarily twenty twenty-one and some twenty twenty-two data. And, um, we think that that would be advantageous for Longmont, just so it can help guide these decisions on what kind of products we build, et cetera. But also, um, jumping on with the, there's a regional housing needs assessment that has a couple of extra layers, um, than our one, our twenty twenty-three one has, because the state put those requirements in place after we did ours. And we had an option to either update ours or jump on the regional. But we really think ours is so valuable to give really Longmont-specific data, especially given Longmont's unique geographic nature of our housing market versus all of our neighbors. So we put that in, and are hoping to get some funding assistance to get that housing needs assessment.
LHA's submitted a letter of support.
Okay.
Yes.
As I was told, I was told you'd do that, so.
Yes, so all of that data, we definitely wanna rely on.
So hearing that you prefer Longmont's, um, a housing needs assessment over the regional, Dr. Cog is opening up their housing needs assessment. Would you be interested in being part of that?
Because that's the one that we're talking about, that's the regional one, the, so the option is, so everybody did, a lot of communities did those regional, sorry, housing needs assessments post-COVID, where there was some money available. And then the state came out with a requirement for what a housing needs assessment should include. We're missing a couple of elements, so the choice was either sign on to the compliant Dr. Cog one, rely on that, or put in some investment, which in this case, we're gonna go up for external funding to do, and get ours updated to be compliant.
Good choice. Okay. All right, do we need, uh, are there any more questions on, uh, development updates? How about the update on operations?
Right. So I added a little, um, a little extra to our operations report to show how our vacancies are going down. And only one case are we going up, and that was really unique. Um, so we can go through that report. Um, I don't wanna spend too much time on this document, because I really wanna talk about the marketing effort that we put forward, and what the results of that are.
Okay.
Um, I don't wanna, we could be here all night.
No, we don't want to be.
We don't want to be. Um, so just running through really quick, and these numbers have even changed since this report was done on the settlement, or on the cert. Um, Aspen Meadows has one vacant unit currently, the neighborhood. Aspen Meadows Senior has six, that is the one where it has increased, and that, I think, is largely due to a few different factors. We've had one person transfer out because they couldn't go longer to afford their unit, so we've transferred to a different property. One person passed away, um, one person has, I think, just moved out for cost. We've got two units that we're holding for the flooring work, that they're storing and staging, and using those two vacant units for that work, which is almost done. Scheduled to be done at the end of July. Um, we're on the first floor, so that's our final stretch. So we expect and anticipate that those units, we will start filling, um, this week and next week is our push for those. Fall River's at four, Spring Creek's at one, Hearthstone has zero, uh, we have applicants for all those. The Lodge is down to three. The Suites, I didn't include in the marketing because it has its own special, unique waitlist process, but they have, um, actually, I think, only one. Um, Village on Main has two, and Briarwood has one. Um, we've seen a, an improvement in getting units filled. Um, I think part of the reason why we had so many vacant units is due to a lot of things. Cost of living increases for everybody, Colorado was expensive, um, inflation not keeping up, I should say, social security not keeping up with inflation, with the majority of our units being senior housing, where they're on a fixed income. Um, you know, their, their income is not increasing at the rate which our housing costs and other food costs and everything else are, are, uh, going up. We've had a lot of people move out, um, to move into family, a lot of people going to assisted living. We've had a lot of deaths over the last, um, I'd say, nine months. Just the nature of senior housing, and, uh, there's definitely like a flow to after school starts and before the holidays, and then summertime. Um, and then just general, it's too expensive, people are leaving Colorado. Um, so that's driving it. Um, if you look at the AMI rents, they're pretty high. Even people say affordable rents are not affordable.
No, they're not.
And some of them are quite in line with market rent here, so it's not always beneficial for them. We have one, Quinsey had one gentleman who wanted to rent a unit at BOM and actually opted to go move into an Airbnb because it was cheaper. So, um, you know, we're, we're struggling to get some of those higher AMI units, as always, the sixty percent, fifty percent, especially with seniors. We struggle to get those filled because a lot of seniors, um, don't qualify for that higher rent, and if they do, they don't wanna spend it, and I understand that. So, um, that's kind of what we're seeing.
What type of, what type of units are those? Are those one-bedroom units?
Um, it depends. There's, there's more.
Like if we're like in an Aspen Meadows, the.
Neighborhood?
Yeah.
So, because the neighborhood is a lot of two, and three, and four, mostly two. So the neighborhood is a lot of two and three and four, mostly two. And those are all forty percent units, except for the PDBs.
Gotcha, okay.
So just looking at property upgrade, let's start, okay. So I'm just going to bring it up because we got an email, Spring Creek, irrigation issues. Maintenance system. One of the components within the irrigation system at Spring Creek was not functioning this spring. And so maintenance has been troubleshooting. And finally, I think, found out what the issue was, and so that should be fixed. But in this heat, the grass is not doing well. So yes, we're aware, if you received an email from the public. We're trying, we're doing our best to get it taken care of. We had annual inspections both at Spring Creek and Fall River. Aspen Meadows flooring is flying, we're almost done. That has been a big, bigger lift than we, I mean, I think we anticipated it was going to be a lot of work, but there's been a lot of disruption for our residents there. They've, they've been pretty great about it, but it's been hard on them, especially moving out of their units for the day. A lot of people don't want to hang out in the common area all the time. Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, the camera installation was underway. Hearthstone, the remediation company was selected and scheduled and is almost done with some of the smaller, smaller work, like replacing the carpet in the, in the hallways in some of the select units. We do have a couple of units that are full gut jobs because of the fire and the water damage. And so those were waiting on permits. I was asked today by residents at Hearthstone if we can, if Harold can convince the building department to speed it up. But I don't think we can.
Well, he can.
I was like, no, sorry, we can't do that. At the Lodge, we're looking into carpet cleaning. Suites apartments, we have an elevator upgrade scheduled in mid-August. The door project was aborted and we're working on the contract and getting that project started.
Is there a question on Suites?
Sure.
Remind me, when was that built originally?
Say like ninety-five.
Ninety.
Oh, it's Zinnia, that's new.
Zinnia's new, yeah, Suites was an old hotel.
Thank you. No further questions.
Yep.
Upgrade the elevator.
We have two elevators there. And one of them, it, it needs a modernization, like all-new, all-new guts, all-new motor, everything is getting replaced. And that's that project. About a hundred and sixty thousand, Kendra? The Suites elevator?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's been used. Briarwood, camera installation is scheduled for that property next. Hoping to do a LHA staff workday to help address some of the exterior needs and get some quality time together, get some elbow grease. Village on Main, forestry removed two of the ash trees in the back due to the Emerald Ash Corps.
Does that work day include commissioners?
If you would like.
If you would like.
Yeah, we'll just know.
Okay. And then residents are very active at Village on Main, hosting all their events and meetings. They are probably our most active group of folks. General updates, we're doing the YARD implementation in phases. Waitlist management is completed, so we're already managing our waitlist online. The next phase is applications for online affordable module, which is planned to go live ahead of Ascent opening so that we're not accepting paper applications. We're just doing it all online. The third phase will be the move-in process, including lease signing and document management. Payments for tenant rent online will be next. And then last but not least, work order management for tenants and staff online. We just want to roll all these changes out at once and overwhelm everyone and make them wear their hair out. Or Kendra, for that matter. Because she's sort of doing the whole process herself.
And so this process will, like when Ascent opens, it'll just be default starting on this?
The waitlist application.
The waitlist application.
But Kendra gave us a test drive of what the new, the module looks like, and it's, it's a great improvement. It really looks good in terms of showing floor plans and amenities. And it's just, it's a better upgrade than what we have on our current website, so it's awesome.
Next thing is Boulder County Energy Outreach Funding. They came into the site walk with Katie Pung, our developer. Patrick, Molly, did you go on that walk?
Nope.
Okay. Patrick with Maintenance, Quincy, were you there? Yeah, Quincy was there, just sort of walking our different properties, seeing what energy upgrades are due and needed where we would benefit from the funding. It's about two hundred thousand dollars. And we've identified AC units on the roof of the Suites. We need to replace something like forty indensors. And that is, that is a heavy lift, literally, if you agree. So we're going to have them help us pay for some of that. And also on the list is some appliances at Aspen Meadows Neighborhood and maybe some HVAC systems over there that are weathered. And we are approaching our year fifteen exit on those, so we can't, we're not planning on a re-syndication anytime soon, so we need to keep those things up and running. So those are the two projects or properties that we've kind of identified for those needs. But this will be an ongoing funding source that we get to tap into so we can plan for that. And we have large expenditures coming down that are not budgeted for, especially surprise ones. One of the other issues that was identified that we'll probably plan on for twenty twenty-six is the swamp cooler at Spring Creek. You know, it doesn't really cool the building, it's, it's there to cool the common areas and hallways, and it's not, it's not very efficient. But we need to do some engineering and planning for that because it's going to be a little bit more involved than just swapping out a unit.
And Lauren wasn't here for this, we had a pretty bad leak with swamp cooler. So it's an ongoing issue.
Mold, mold never showed up, but everyone was worried about it.
Briarwood office is vacant, the Veterans Community Project moved out and left it in great condition. It was a great partnership for the, for what was needed at the time. So we're brainstorming ideas for the property in the future. Marketing efforts, we had, you know, as you know, a lot of vacancies causing a strain on us financially. We already talked about some of the reasons why. On May twenty-second, we sent out a marketing email to all of our housing contacts, nonprofit partners, city partners, other housing authorities, and more. And basically letting them know what our vacancies are, what the AMIs are, what the rents are, you know, what we're looking to fill with, you know, important information about the property so that they could reach out to anyone that they know who is looking for housing and get people signing up for the waitlist. Because a lot of our properties, we have gone through the waitlist and either people didn't qualify or they've moved on or they don't have a working co-owner, which we're finding that's a lot of people. So to generate interest, and we'll go over the report after this. Recent bill changes regarding pets. House Bill twenty-five twelve oh seven will require any future housing projects funded through DOLA or receiving Y-Tech credits, that they have to allow pets. LHA is a pet-free community, just by default for most of our properties with the exception of our two oh twos because pet requires that we allow pets. So just something that we have to plan for that any future projects that we build will need to accept pets and have a pet policy in place. This will not affect Ascent because we already got it coming.
It, it just skipped my mind, but who was, what was the group that came to us and presented about?
The Millie Millie.
Yes. Can we work with them? With pets or?
I think that was more for unhoused.
Yeah, the PSH properties?
The PSH and unhoused.
Of course.
That's actually, I think, is part of the solution in that any project will allow pets. It will inherently create other issues.
Yes, it will. Probably more deposits to track.
More deposits to track and things like that and inherently.
Just setting on the size?
Pets, can you put a limit on the size of the pets?
Yeah, it allows us to put some reasonable restrictions in. Allow, does allow us to have reasonable restrictions. I can't recall off the top of my head if size is one of them, but, but breed is not one of them. So we can't, we can't discriminate based on breed.
That being said, if somebody were to submit a reasonable accommodation because the ginormous dog.
Yeah.
Is there an emotional support animal or service animal? We can't just, we have zero restrictions on that. We do get some wild requests from time to time for like a emotional support capuchin monkey. The city of Longmont actually has rules about what is a domestic pet versus not and what is allowed. So we can fall back on some of those if we get some wild requests. Yeah, it's just, we'll, we'll look at, we'll get with our attorney and look at what different pet policies exist out there and what makes sense and what's reasonable. Sometimes putting more restrictions actually makes no difference. So we'll have to weigh all those different options. Which ties in nicely into our policy work. We've been working to catalog, update, and draft policies and procedures for all of our different divisions, management, maintenance, compliance, voucher, accounting, and regulatory or legal. This will help strengthen our processes and improve all the outcomes that we have. Because right now, we'll be like, hey, don't we have a policy for that? And then we have to go look for it. Maybe it was signed, maybe it wasn't, maybe it's outdated. So we're working on trying to catalog all of those, go through those. You will, you will start seeing policies get funneled into these meetings for approval. Some of them will be brand new, some will just be updates that, you know, be prepared for the policy fund. Staffing updates, we had a new accountant join our team, Angela. Scarlett will be joining as our clinician two at the Suites. She starts seven twenty-one, coming up soon. Thank you for allocating more funds to that position so that we could jump it up to a clinician two because we were having such a hard time finding someone bilingual who would meet the requirements as a one.
Did you get more applicants as a result as well or?
Not many. She was sort of perfect. No, I think we got lucky.
The human service side right now, just globally, when we look at Christina's world and senior services and, and talking with my counterparts in different places, is probably becoming one of the hardest jobs to fill.
Why?
I, it's, I think it's kind of supply and demand. For so long, social service positions weren't compensated. And so you have people choosing different directions to go into. I do really think that's probably going to be financially a headwind that we're going to see just across the board because it's actually showing itself in the same way that IT positions showed itself in the nineties and engineers in the two thousands and the two thousand teens is, I think we're going to see the benchmark in those positions move pretty aggressively because it's hard. And I think the good news is some of the younger folks are starting to see that and actually shift into that from a degree standpoint. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
It's a lot of school for not a lot of work.
Right.
So to do that prospect. We have a vacant assistant community manager role. We promoted one of our assistant community managers to fill one of our community manager roles. So that created a vacancy, but because that person, that role supported Village on Main, Briarwood, Aspen Meadows Senior, and Aspen Meadows Neighborhood. We had so much happening at Aspen Meadows Senior that was taking up a lot of time. And we have really strong management there. We kind of helped on that position because we didn't have anywhere really that we could sit with all that extra work going on. But now that we are starting to gear up for Ascent, lease-up in the last quarter, we're going to start aggressively looking for someone for that role. Nikki and Jana have traded properties. So Nikki was at, Nikki filled the role for Hearthstone and Lodge, and Jana was at Suites Zinnia. And so we swapped them so that Nikki could get a new challenge and Jana could get a break because she's been there for a year. And those are some of our, our largest portfolio and our most challenging, operationally, tenant-wise, all of it. So that's going well. And then we are, of course, in hiring discussions for management and maintenance as well as custodial for Ascent as it gets ready to open. And so the next thing in your pocket is the email that we sent out to everybody in May just showing what our vacancies at the time were. And these really spoke to vacancies that we didn't have current applicants for and ones that we knew were going to come online. The document I gave you, I apologize, there's some typos in it because I was filling it out this morning and this is something. But so this is the analysis of what was advertised versus what is still currently vacant or new vacancies. So first is Spring Creek. This is the PDF that I, that I handed you, yes. Where it says newer remaining vacancy, those numbers might be wrong. Just pay attention to the bulleted units because those are current. So we advertised four units at Spring Creek and we only have one remaining. And that's actually a new vacancy that they, they vacated in early May. So all of the ones that we marketed have been either filled or we have an applicant pending with a, to be determined, move-in date. Fall River, we had one advertised at the time. We, we did have another one that was vacant at that time, but there had been an applicant pending who'd been canceled in June at the last minute. So that one is actually already re-rented and ready for a move-in August first. We've had new vacancies come into, come into the fold in June, so those also have applicants pending. So we have one true vacant unit, and that's four oh three at Fall River. Aspen Meadows Senior, we have six vacancies there. Two are being held for the work. Two are new vacancies and one is a future vacancy. And that future vacancy is the person who is transferring over to Hearthstone. So we have an urgent need to rent these because we're not meeting our debt coverage service ratio. Not a problem for us. So we're going to be focusing on getting these units filled. Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, we have one remaining vacancy, which we're hoping we'll have filled by the end of this week. Hearthstone, zero vacancies, we advertised three, we have three people moving in.
Can I ask a question? Why is the Hearthstone rent with the, with?
So that's, that's the two oh two property where the rent is set by HUD. But the tenants only pay thirty percent of their income towards that rent, and then we get the rest. It's kind of like a PDB. They function like a PDB. We're hoping those rents will go up, we're going to request higher rents when we do the budget in August.
And they're, they're pretty low.
Yes, they are.
Well, they, they were low when we, I mean, they were about four hundred when we came on board, when the city came on board. So we've gotten some pretty significant increases. Now we're at seven hundred on one, I don't think.
Six seventy-one on the Hearthstone and seven hundred on the Lodge.
Yeah.
The Lodge has three vacancies remaining from five.
So that's the one where we go in and we build the budget and we say, here's what we need for rent. And then HUD can go, yeah, we'll give it to you or no, we won't. And so we had some progress, we made a lot of progress early on because they realized that the LHA at the time was not doing that. But it's becoming harder to get them to push that number the further we get out for that time period. That's why we want to exit the two oh two.
Briarwood, we advertised two units, we have one vacancy left, which we think we have someone for. And in Village on Main, we have two, two units there. Did we film the studio?
I got two people coming tomorrow to look at it, so we'll see.
Yeah.
What was that?
I have two people coming tomorrow to look at the studio.
Thank you.
The studios, we're finding a little bit hard to rent even though they're the least expensive. People want a little bit more space. So where sixty percent are too expensive, studios are cheaper, but then the people want more space maybe. So.
I guess you can't rent a roommate in that thing or in the studios if it's sufficient, I'm sure.
Getting roommates, even if you wanted to have a roommate in studio with a forty percent unit, to get two people to qualify would be hard. They'd have to make very, very low income.
Yeah, it gets hard in affordable roommates because you have to calculate total incomes.
Yeah.
And then that pitches them out.
It's, it's aggregate for the single.
Yeah.
Suites is not on here because same thing, we have a special process for getting people in at the Suites. And the other units that are not listed on here are project-based voucher units because they also have a completely different waitlist and process for filling those. So we might have a couple of extra vacancies, but we're working through that process with the voucher fee. That's what we've been working towards. And really, the bulk of the effort has been Quincy. He sort of has spearheaded getting these units filled. If you see him running around on the phone, that's because he's probably informed a tenant or potential applicant running and showing units even on weekends. So I really appreciate his dedication to getting that done. But we're almost to the finish line with those. We're never done with our vacancies, but at least we can get back in a good flow. Next on the list is Public Health and Safety. So Sarah's out today, she did email me some information that I can share with you guys. Calls for service, just a reminder, this is spanning three months because we skipped last month's meeting. So they seem hired, but that's because it's two months worth. May thirteenth through July fifteenth, the Suites have fifty calls for service, seventeen were core, following up or working with a client. Hearthstone had two, Lodge had six, Fall River three, Spring Creek three, Briarwood had zero. Village had two. Village had two, Aspen Meadows Neighborhood had nine and AMSA, um, had three and two of them were medical calls related to their death. Briarwood camera should start next week or the week after and we're waiting on parts for the installation at Aspen Meadows Neighborhood. I did not know this until I got back into town, uh, but apparently we had a theft of a trailer at Aspen Meadows, um, Senior. We usually park our, our trailer for maintenance at that property and it was stolen. So we're trying to ID a suspect on campus and find out what happened.
It wasn't a private trailer, it was a, it was a.
LHA trailer.
Yeah.
Licensed to.
That works. So we want that. Um, so we're working on that, but other than that, it's kind of been quiet.
We have purchased air tags to put in all of the little vehicles that we have.
Joe was about to ask about that.
So serious, yeah. We did that this morning. We're going to throw them in the four wheelers and all the stuff that we have at the properties just to cover us a little bit. So, yeah.
Right out of the middle of the Aspen Meadows parking lot, which is quite out in the open.
It's by the street.
And we got cameras.
Yeah.
On Tuesday at five o'clock in the afternoon. So it was daytime.
Somebody just breezing.
Yeah.
Do they need a car as well? Do you have to hook up?
Yes. Yeah. It's like one of the ones that you can like drive stuff up on.
Oh, oh.
Oh, so it has to be a pretty decent sized truck or something.
Yeah, it's a, it was a pickup. Oh, it was a, uh, what? A GMC Yukon?
People probably just thought it was business as usual.
Yeah, well, I mean, we know.
Started to see more trailers, uh, dealers self booting them.
Oh, yeah. Well, they're an option.
So it's, you can't roll it off.
Oh.
Like self booting like a thirteen foot wheel.
Yeah.
So with that, say we're by boot.
And this probably sells those.
It probably does.
So, uh, we're done with the, uh, safety updates?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Um, a couple of things Molly and I wanted to talk about. So, um, when we were at CML, this is LHA City. Um, one of the challenges that we've been looking at is the Prop one twenty-three requirements. And, and so basically in a nutshell, the way that they calculated Longmont's requirements, it looked at naturally occurring, affordable and attain, and attainable. And what we were seeing and oddly enough, the way that the state promulgated, at least the way we thought they promulgated the rules.
At the time, in twenty twenty-three, that was the understanding.
Um, is, is that it actually was more punitive, um, for communities that had been more aggressive on building housing. Than communities that had not built housing. And so the goal of the units that we had to generate was higher to meet the Prop one twenty-three standard than what, let's say Gary had to produce. Because they haven't been producing housing. And so we were starting to get concerned about it. So at CML, I ran into Crystal May, who is our goal rep and kind of fussed at him about it. And they set up a meeting and we had the meeting today. Molly was there for mo, all of it. I was there for half of it. Do you want to go over what it said?
Um, so we told them that some of our struggles with the way Prop one two three was set up, which most of that is really because of the legislative language prescribed. Affordability levels and the, um, enough about how to calculate it, that the way that it went about, it just, it just didn't work. For example, counting naturally occurring affordable, meaning looking at census data to see, um, what your incomes are and what your rents are. And then projecting saying, okay, so you have the capacity to do X and so we expect you to generate this many deed restricted affordable units in the next three years. And we kept saying, that's apples and oranges. They don't talk to each other. Um, so we did work with them at the time to set a, um, goal that we thought was feasible with the production that we did. But we had to play with census data, basically find some tiny way to make this happen. Um, so since then, we've also figured out that, um, a major challenge is that CHAFA implemented the income averaging rules for Lytech. At the exact same time that Prop one two three rolled this out and the two agencies never talked about how would we make these fit together. So previously when all of our Lytech units, so all seventy-two Ascent units would have counted towards our Prop one two three goal. But, but now because some are seventies and eighties, which again, for us meant we got more thirties, like it's, they're, it's there for a purpose, not just for. Um, for that higher income level, only thirty-eight of them are going to count towards Prop one two three because of income averaging. So, um, we went over our projections with them today and showed them, we are doing, we have every tool possible. At our fingertips compared to most communities across the front range and we are not on track to meet this goal. Um, so we either need to talk about the methodology of the count or what else some of these other challenges that are going on. Plus, we told them a lot about the market here. Like our private developers have really slowed down. They're waiting to see what happens with interest rates and land costs and everything. Um, so in the end of the meeting, they told us, well, there's, they didn't call it new, but I think they found a way to make this a. Possibility in the last couple of years. Um, you can take, because we started with a naturally occurring affordable count. You can incorporate your new naturally occurring affordable to help your, meet your goal. So we, our goal is three hundred and four units by December twenty twenty-six. We're at one hundred and nineteen right now. Um, and for a couple of the projects in the next year, like we don't know if they're going to make it or not in this timeframe. So they said, well, here's our sales limits that we've set and it's really only based on principal and interest. So not the full, fully burdened cost of housing, which means these sale limits are quite generous. Um, if you just run MLS data and show that your community, um, sold houses below this level, you can count all of those houses.
Oh, really?
So I said, okay, this doesn't solve the architectural problems with how the program is set up and we will be in, we will be in a struggle again in the future. But for now, we'll take it.
That's right. That's quite a loophole.
So it's a non-issue, but.
So it's suddenly a non-issue as of this morning.
Oh, my gosh.
Do you have that in writing?
We are.
It won't matter. It changed tomorrow.
They're sending this on the documents.
Yeah, uh, actually we do, they sent it right after.
No.
Are they telling other jurisdictions this or do you have to yell at them?
If these, in one-on-one meetings, it's not on their website? It's not out there right now?
That's quite a loophole.
So it's an interesting.
They're making it up as they go along.
Probably. I think it's an interesting conversation. So what came out of it is they're, they're actually using Longmont. When they're talking to other communities about this is what you need to do. I mean, they said they're showing on their websites, they're talking about what we're doing. And, and, and they also recognize the fact that we're actually producing more units than anyone else. When you look at the size of our community.
Proportionally or like sheer volume?
Um, sheer, I would say they, they highlighted across the spectrum. So just j- building housing period under these thresholds.
I think if it's, if you look at it proportionally by views like population and size, I think we would be even higher than what other people are generating. And so there's also a reason we're getting Prop one twenty-three funds and things like that because I think it is about the production. That, that we're doing, but we got into a little bit deeper conversation with them really about understanding how the market impacts things and. And kind of said, they were like, well, we need to talk to our legislators and we're like, well, we'll go beside you. Because, you know, we're, this is the experience we're seeing. So I think they'll be tapping us more in terms of having those conversations. Based on our practical experience. And so overall, it's pretty good. Um, I, I also get the impression that they've realized what the problem is and they're trying to find a way for. Communities that are producing a lot of housing to get through that system. So it's a good conversation. Um, so, you know, check mark, we'll breathe a little bit, um, and then keep moving forward. Uh, the other thing that we wanted to talk about is, um, we talked about Briarwood. Um, a handful of you were on when we first took over the, the Housing Authority. Um, and you may remember that we sold the building that the Housing Authority owned to the Center for People with Disabilities. Um, our original intent was to try to sell Briarwood to VCP because, for housing. They obviously for different economic conditions have decided to do something else. And so. Um, I think when we look at where we stand from a fund balance perspective, that's something we're going to need to reconsider. Uh, to boost the fund balance so we have more money available for, for other needs. Um, and so Molly and I are starting to, to think about, um, what is it? All Roads?
Mm-hmm.
They, they have a grant actually that they received from us, um, for, um.
From the city.
From the city, uh, the city, uh, the, from the city for permanent supportive housing, really hard to house individuals.
Scattered sites.
And scattered sites and obviously. Our recent conversation with some of this has enlightened us in terms about neighborhood impact. And so Molly, we've been, Molly's been talking to them about potentially looking at Briarwood. Which, um, also lets them deal with some staff space. Um, and have staffing there on an ongoing basis to, to manage the facilities. So Molly, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Um, so the money that we're talking about is the Homemark grant, one point two million is what was awarded in twenty twenty-three. For the purpose of a future scattered sites PSH project. Um, that is a model that they do in Boulder and have been doing for some time. They've got about forty units of scattered sites PSH. Um, they, we were, you know, when the registered sex offenders ordinance, registered sex offenders ordinance went through, it was, oh, well, we were talking to them. Like if this comes out, then your idea of hard to house, which could include people with, um, sex offender registrations. You might, it, this, this could be a challenge now. You're going to be looking at, um, where you need to go, where you're going to do neighborhood engagement, et cetera, et cetera. And we said, you know, the Briarwood is about, the office space is about to be empty. Um, it is not within one of the, um, inactive bubbles. Um, it is in a location, it doesn't have a real strong residential neighborhood presence around it. Um, it has space for staff and to provide services on site, et cetera. Uh, would you be interested in using that Homemark grant for this instead of scattered sites? Um, they are preliminarily interested. So we've been pulling documents just to have a conversation. Um, to see if that would fit. They also have worthy cause money out there that was for this intended purpose, about five hundred thousand dollars. Um, and their board has already committed to undertake debt to acquire, um, uh, spaces for this. And so, uh, we've just shared with them kind of a flyer that we would do, that I put together to use for either a purpose like this or to find a new tenant. Um, pulled up our old appraisal, which we do have an old appraisal from when we did that res, uh, refinance in twenty twenty-two. And at the time, the building was appraised at between one point six and one point eight and a half million. Um, and just sharing with them, like if you were to do this, what would happen? A, we cannot displace our tenants. If they want, if we have a space in another LHA property they're eligible for and they want to, that's fine. But, um, you'd have to absorb the tenants and if you want to, uh, bring in folks under the, the tenant selection plan that you typically use for this. You'd have to wait for people to move out through attrition. Um, we have home funds in this. That home affordability period expires March twenty twenty-six. But there is still an affordability covenant on it for another thirty-five years. So it's, it's, uh, restricted as affordable for the long term. Um, and that's through the state. So we're just talking through, okay, we've got PBBs and home units. If we were to sell it to anyone, what would we have to, what steps would we have to take to make sure we've got that, um, process in a, in a good spot? And speaking with our, you know, our, who we need to at HUD or at the state to make sure that happens. But before we go much further, we wanted to make sure that, um, this was a direction we should be heading, continuing to talk about this as a possibility. Oh, and I met with IDU, I talked to him.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they really, so, uh, uh, Commissioner Haddad, I'm referring that with an, uh, intellectual development of disabilities developer. Um, they're interested in working in Longmont. So I talked to him about kind of repurposed an existing building like Briarwood versus a new build. They really are a new build specialist. Also, they want it to be purpose-built, trauma-informed design. And also, um, universally accessible, which Briarwood is not and cannot be. Um, so it, Briarwood was not a good fit, but I gave, uh, gave him some contacts for some.
Oh, good.
Um, products of, I'm sorry, private developers doing, uh, market rate units that are looking for like a land donation option maybe for a provider to do their IH requirement. So, um, circling back on that.
Thank you.
So before we step too much further down the road with All Roads, are you okay with us continuing doing that approach?
Comments?
How long would it take for All, because Briarwood is leased up, isn't it? So how long?
It's nine out of ten units would be stepped.
Yeah. How long would it take before that?
So first of all, um, eight of the existing nine tenants are already forty percent AMI or above. Um, we are continuing, I also was told, um, we're continuing as business as usual because I don't want to hold units open for, in case this doesn't work out. So we just filled one unit and that is with somebody that's actually over forty percent AMI. Um, but so a lot of them in terms of affordability, it's already in their, kind of their, their target, uh, group and business model. Not necessarily, um, on the tenant selection plan and the backgrounds, however. Um, so it could, I mean, we, I think our oldest, we just pulled that, we've had a couple of residents that have been there for a number of years. I think one going back to twenty eighteen or so, um, at Briarwood. So it, it could be some time, but sometime that's okay too, because it takes some time to bring in the right people as, as the need is there to.
And then part of it is, part of why this is important, so when we look at Ascent coming online and we look at some of these vacancies. Maybe we can be more intentional once we know what they want to do to start working with folks to fill other vacancies. That, that we're challenged with. And so. A lot of moving parts, but before we go too much further, we just wanted to not outrun your headlights on this one.
Sounds like you have a direction. So everyone agrees it's good.
I do think that it, there's co-benefits with this one. It's helping spend city money on, it's, it's just like, there's lots of partners involved that, uh, is just doing some good work. So.
Well, and not to diminish that, that money would then go into the fund balance of which.
Yeah.
Gives us a little bit of cushion on time for the next project, but then as they have operational needs and capital needs. Um, gives us a cushion on funding some of those when an elevator decides to go out.
Yep.
And, and things like that. So again, it's going to take some time, but we'll see what we come up with.
And if we get this far, then a purchase and sale agreement would come to you all for approval.
Any, uh, Commissioner comments? No?
Move the adjourn?
Second, I accept that. Thank you. All of us can take, all of us post. We are turning.